I've known several council members for a lot of years, some of you I've only known for a few shorter time. I've talked to all of you from time to time on certain issues, and I just want the public to know that each of these council members have nothing but the city at the best heart, the city. They may not all agree with each other all the time, and the public may not always agree with their opinions on their decisions, but I truly believe that each and every one of them love the city and want what's best for its citizens. Now I'd like to present plaques to each of the council members and thank them for their service to this fine city we live in.
First of all, to Mayor Ed DeGerris, in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the city of Papa Bluff as mayor for the year 2017 to 2018, presented this sixteenth day of April 2018. This plaque is presented to Susan McVeigh in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, as mayor pro temp for the year 2017-18, presented this sixteenth day of April 2018. And we have plaques for each of the council members with their hard-earned silver dollar on them, so I will just read one of the plaques and then give one to each of the council members. City of Papa Bluff, Missouri presents to Robert Smith this $1 compensation in appreciation and gratitude for outstanding service to the community. As city councilman for the fifth ward for 2017-18, presented this sixteenth day of April 2018. This one is for Ron Black, who served at large this past year. And Steve Davis, who served at large this past year. Susan McVeigh for the first ward. Barbara Horton for the third ward. Phillip Crocker.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you for the fourth ward. And Ed DeGerris for the second ward.
Item B, the city clerk will present to the city council for their approval of the abstract votes cast at municipal election held Tuesday, April 3, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each council person received a copy of the abstracted votes in your council packet. You received a certified copy that Butler County sent us, and a tally sheet. In the second ward, we had two candidates that run for that seat, Dylan Groves and Ed DeGerris. Dylan Groves received 28 votes, and Ed DeGerris received 82. Ed won that race. And then in the fourth ward, we had two councilmen. Shane Korman had 104 votes, and Phillip Crocker had 75, and Shane Korman was the winner of that ward.
We entertain a motion saying to accept the abstracted votes as presented.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, retiring city councilman from the fourth ward, Phillip Crocker, will address the city council.
I just want to thank the citizens of Ward Four for giving me the opportunity to serve on this council for three years. It's been an honor, and I wish the council going forward the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip.
Retiring councilman from the second ward and Mayor Ed DeGerris will address the city council. I'd also like to thank Phillip for his service. I know he did a lot of work on the packets. We talked most every day on his way to work.
We still can.
All the council have been very supportive, and I thank the citizens for supporting me and encouraging me. And it's been great to serve as the mayor of my hometown. I know we've made a lot of progress. I think it's all started when citizens voted into 67 tax. We saw eight points grow. I asked Mr. Massingham a few months ago to figure it out when I think MML was here, and new buildings and roads came up to over $400 million for our city and increased buildings, new buildings. And so that to get to the Shelby Road extension, and at this time, if Mr. Boyers and his family would be the front at the podium.
We started this Shelby Road extension or Shelby Road Two. I met with Kelly, and we talked about the things and how it was going, and he gave, I guess, some wishes of what he thought, I mean, nothing seemed out of line, I'm not sure to pass that on. And then immediately said, well, Ed, that's just the right thing to do for our town. To me, that made a great impact. And we went up to the groundbreaking, and I saw the cleared land that separates this farm that's been in the family for close to three generations. I couldn't imagine the sacrifice that this family has taken to the city of Papa Bluff. The only thing I can think to do is to thank God for places Boyer family in our community, and giving him the heart to sacrifice so much to see Papa Bluff grow. And yesterday, picture, one of the songs, first song to sing, with your love, it's all together. For me, your love for Papa Bluff, it made all this happen. I know whenever I go up Shelby Road, make attention after this is done, your love for the community and future mankind will be seen by myself and a lot of others, and will be on permanent display. I don't know how we could ever thank you enough. At this time, I'd like to present you with heat in the city. And this plaque, which says, presented to Kelly Boyer family in recognition of your lifelong love and commitment to Papa Bluff and your sacrifice for the future growth, presented this sixteenth day of April 2018. Mayor Ed DeGerris.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Ed, Ed, turn around and pose for the paper. Get a good shot for this one. Get that baby up here, yeah. Judy, hold your plaque up. There you go. I want it to look pretty. Yeah.
This time, the city clerk will square in the newly-elected city council members.
If I can have Mr. Korman and Ed DeGerris. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, I say you hear it.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that of the state of Missouri.
And that of the state of Missouri.
And of the ordinances of the city of Papa Bluff.
And of the ordinances of the city of Papa Bluff.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of councilmen of said city.
Councilmen of said city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Item F, the new city council will conduct an election for the purposes of electing a mayor and a mayor pro temp for the year 2018-2019.
At this time, the chair will entertain nominations for mayor.
Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate Robert Smith. He's served with distinction five terms on the city council. I would like to nominate him by acclamation for mayor.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Susan McVeigh.
Second.
For Susan?
No, for Sir Robert Smith.
Okay. We don't have to have a second on these.
Okay.
Yes, just the nomination at this point. Are there any others? Okay, at this time, I'll call out your name, and you need to tell me which candidate you'd like to vote for. McVeigh?
Susan.
DeGerris?
Susan.
Horton?
She called.
Korman?
Now Horton.
Horton. Robert.
Korman?
Robert.
Let's see, Robert?
Robert Smith.
Susan.
And Black?
Susan McVeigh.
Okay, and Susan wins it, 4 to 3. So Susan is the new mayor. Okay, and at this time, I'll entertain nominations for Mayor Pro Temp.
Madam Clerk, I'd nominate Steve Davis.
Second.
Is there any other nominations?
Make a motion, nominate a cease, proceed with what.
Okay, since there's one, is there a vote to, for him to win by acclamation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Steve Davis is our mayor pro temp.
Anything else to entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special meeting is adjourned.
We'll call this a meeting, the regular meeting of the city council, the city of Papa Bluff to order, to be held on Monday, April 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. We'll have our invocation by Brian Mays from the Temple Baptist Church. Please rise. Come up here.
Standing, thank you so much for this opportunity. Will you pray with me? Lord, we just come to you this evening, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, for the blessing and for the gift of life. Lord, I thank you for this opportunity to stand underneath this ceiling, Lord, with these people, I pray, Lord, for our mayor, for this assembled council, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, Lord, in the items that will be discussed, Lord, that you'll give them confidence in what's good, Lord, and what's fitting for the welfare of the people of this community of Papa Bluff, Lord, and above all, that you would grant them the ability to work together in harmony, Lord. We love you, and we thank you for your grace, in Jesus' name. Everybody sit.
Amen.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have John Martin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and thank you again for electing me your new mayor. Ms. Kirby will have the roll call, please.
Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Korman.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Temp Black. I'm sorry, Davis, Davis. It's gonna be a long night.
Ron Black is here again.
Yes, sorry, Mayor Pro Temp Davis and Mayor McVeigh.
Here.
We do have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either an item on the printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, this time, we'll have our citizens' input. Each item and each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. And it looks like we have, Mark Baker? Oh, it is on the agenda?
We have an item on the agenda for.
Okay, so we'll have you come up a little later. Sorry, I'm not acclimated just yet. Because I had that, I thought so. We'll bring you up in just a few minutes. Thank you. Is there any other citizens that want to come forward and speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have any item removed or the consent agenda and have it considered separately, he or she may do so. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Or the consent agenda, I apologize. It'll take a few times. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our workshop items for discussion tonight. Item A, the city council will discuss a proposed ordinance to establish an orderly system for certain employees not covered under RSMO Section 105.500, to select an exclusive bargaining representative and for such employees, exclusive bargaining representative to engage in collective bargaining in a fashion consistent with Missouri constitution and state law. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We put this item on the agenda after request several weeks ago from Mr. Baker with the IBW regarding union representation for the police department. The ordinance that was sent to you in your packets is a model ordinance used for cities in Missouri to establish an orderly system for employees not covered under RSMO Section 105.500, to select an exclusive bargaining unit. This ordinance sets up the rules and regulations for certain employees of the police department to have an election on whether they want union representation. If you have any questions, myself or city attorney Mark Richardson will try to answer them. Since this was brought to us almost a month ago, and it was suggested by council that we wait until the new council is sworn in, which they have been, our next council meeting is not for three more weeks. What I would ask you all to do is have a special meeting later this week to vote on this ordinance, so we may accommodate our officer's request and get this item moving forward.
And the council's response? Would it be okay? Okay. So at this time, I would entertain a motion as second to move the voting session, move this item to, the voting session to be held on Wednesday, April 18, at 7:00 PM here in this chamber, right? Steve, and do I have a second?
Second.
And are they gonna have discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We're going to invite him here on.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I'll have to go back to that discussion. All right, before we vote on it, would we have any discussion from the audience? Mr. Baker, if you'd like to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor McVeigh. Just want to maybe go over a couple of, I don't want to say clarifications, but wanted to make sure, I saw the language, the way it's written up here, and I haven't seen the ordinance, but you talk about certain city employees not covered under the state statute, and that will be the commissioned law enforcement officers, what I call the gun carriers. And I guess I just, I wanted to make sure to clarify, I know Mr. Richardson and I have had a discussion a few weeks back, and he kind of mentioned maybe the bargaining unit we were after was about 20 officers, and that's, that's not correct in the fact that employees from all classifications within the department have expressed interest in being represented by 702, IBW. These classifications include the officers, which includes captains, lieutenants, sergeants, corporals, detectives, all officers on patrol and serving as school resource officers, as well as the office clerks, dispatchers, animal control, and code enforcement. And our request for the past two meetings has been to hopefully get voluntary recognition placed on the agenda as a workshop item for, for the entire department. We've actually requested and received all of the job descriptions for the department employees that have been supplied to us. We find them all to be reasonable and eligible to be in the bargaining unit. And I just, a little goodwill sometimes goes a long way. I just want to share with you all a little bit of stuff that we do sometimes, and I don't want to make any promises for the police department here, but last night, we took a photo opportunity with the city of Minor, and this is Mayor Darren Chapman and Police Chief Griggs, and then there's three officers here. They struggled with their budget for several years, and we represent the officers over there, as most of you well know. They came to us a couple of years ago, and we're a little bit short on funding for police vests, and we definitely want to protect and preserve our men and women in blue, and we did make a donation of $1,500 for them to purchase three new vests. And finally, as they hired on and fitted people for the vests, we were able to get a photo op last night, and that'll be submitted to the media. So that's, that's part of some of the stuff that we do, but I guess I'm here tonight to ask a little question after seeing the workshop item, knowing that we want to represent more than just the commissioned police officers, which technically, Mr. Richardson, you correct me if I'm wrong, this ordinance would just cover those people. So where would we be to ask for voluntary recognition for, for the entire group? That's, that's going to be the challenge we're going to have, because for the dispatchers, the code enforcement, the animal control, their avenue can be through the State Board of Mediation, but if we wanted to request an election for them, the first thing they're going to ask me is have you ask for voluntary recognition from the city. And I've been here twice to talk about that. So I think I'm here again tonight to continue discussing that. For us, maybe not for you all, and we can talk about it. There could be a need of administration to put them all in the entire bargaining unit as one structure, but that may not be your preference, and we can certainly work through all of that. So the long story short, I know there's a workshop item on that ordinance, but I'm here tonight, and I apologize if maybe I should have pursued a little bit more harder to come up under citizens' input, but I'm still interested and would like to reiterate, reiterate our request for voluntary recognition for the entire bargaining unit as we described it. I know I emailed with Mr. Massingham and Mr. Richardson, and we were going to sit down and try to come to a resolution on the bargaining unit description. I still think we can do that. But I know it takes two council members, a motion and a second, to get something placed on the agenda, or the mayor, Ms. McVeigh, wanted to pursue that, she could do that herself. So I guess I'm just checking back in tonight to see where everybody's at on that.
Mayor, is that not what we're, Mr. Massingham, what we're basically going to be doing Wednesday night?
We're passing an ordinance to set up guidelines for them to have an election. We're not voluntarily, we're not recommending to voluntarily recognize them. We feel like each, each person in that department that can be a part of the bargaining unit to be able to vote on it.
But, and I might add, Mr. Baker, to, I think, kind of answer your question and to answer that question for the council. This proposed ordinance sets up an orderly process for a number of things. Number one, to allow for negotiations under a procedure to determine what the appropriate bargaining unit is. So this doesn't say who the bargaining unit is. This sets up the process for us to determine that. The first step, assuming this ordinance is adopted, would be for you, on behalf of the police officers, to sit down with Mr. Massingham, myself, and any others, and discuss the issue of the appropriateness of a bargaining unit. We may be able to, as you said, and you're hopeful, and we're hopeful, that we could determine what that is. However, if we disagree on what the appropriate bargaining unit is, then this sets out the orderly process for that determination through an independent hearing officer who would make that determination. So it's doing exactly what you're suggesting needs to be done. We'll sit down, we'll discuss, and we'll see if we can, right now, it's our opinion, has been, frankly, as you know, that the appropriate bargaining unit would be the basic police officers that do not carry the rank of corporal sergeant, supervisory relation positions. And we, we also have not really broached the issue of animal control and code control, code enforcement, that may or may not come in. However, if we are unable to agree as to the unit, the appropriate unit size and, and what it encompasses, then that would be decided by an independent third person.
And, and I think how you do that on the side that's not covered by the State Board of Mediation, and I haven't reviewed the ordinance, so it may be completely acceptable, I just, I haven't seen it. So I think the question is, will, under this proposed ordinance, if it's adopted, would there be an avenue for everybody in the police department, understanding we may have differences on the sergeants, corporals classifications, would there be an avenue for everybody to be considered in the bargaining unit? Or would we have to run two separate tracks, one for what I'd say non-commissioned police officers? What's your opinion on that? Or do you have one?
Well, if, if it were to come to that, Mr. Baker, that would be determined by the independent hearing officer that's contemplated in, in the statute, and he or she, whoever that independent, third-party hearing officer be, would, would make that determination. And depending on how, what the outcome of that would be, there would always be an opportunity to organize a, a separate bargaining unit that might include, you know, other members of the overall department. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I think that's all encompassed in this. This ordinance was put together, as you know, and we've discussed, historically, police officers were prohibited from organizing in 2007 by virtue of Supreme Court ruling, and then subsequently expanded upon by two subsequent cases. The, the court said, yes, police officers can organize, which is, which is fine. However, the legislature has not seen fit, for whatever reason, to change the, that particular section or sections of the law to recognize police officers. Therefore, they're not covered by the state, as you and I know. The State Board of Mediation is set up, and it's very, you know, it's sponsored, it's under the Department of Labor, and it's very, very nice organization. Supreme Court didn't have the power to order the State Board of Mediation to deal with these issues. So what we have now, we have police officers across the state that are entitled to organize, but we have no statewide statute that sets out the process and gives the authority for the determination of those various issues. And so what the Supreme Court did is kind of created a mess for all the cities individually, and said, you guys are on your own. And, and the reason, as you and I discussed at the last meeting, the reason we haven't done anything is because, because we haven't had a request, and so we haven't addressed it. And all of the cities across the state have been the same way. And as the issue has come up among and around the state, they have adopted ordinances. This ordinance that we're proposing to you tonight is, we call it a model ordinance, and it, and it does basically, it kind of tracks what the state statute does, vis a vis the State Board of Mediation and so forth, for that orderly process of, number one, how to determine the bargaining unit, number two, the, the availability for a consent vote, consent recognition or voluntary recognition, as Mr. Baker referred to. And in the event that, that those things- And in the event that, that those things don't happen, then, in our case, the State Board of Mediation is replaced with an independent third-party hearing officer that would make the determinations that if they weren't police officers, if they were any other department of the state, that would be determined by the State Board of Mediation. And that's exactly what this, this ordinance does. This ordinance has been adopted by a few cities around the state that have been faced with the issue of, of a unionization of their police departments. And so, as Mr. Baker suggested at the last meeting, we need to have a plan. We need to have a process that we can all rely on as we go forward. This does not prevent cooperation, collaboration, and, and agreement on various issues as we go down the path. It just, as the old saying from the famous poet, "Strong fences make good neighbors." And, and this is a way to recognize the right of our police officers to organize, and sets out a, a discernible, predictable process by which that will happen.
And you're, Wednesday night, you're going to vote on this, you think?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
If the, if we pass. We haven't voted yet, but I mean, that's the motion on the table.
Okay. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Does anyone else in the audience want to address this issue before we take a vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council will review bids received for aviation fuel, for the supplying of aviation fuel and fuel equipment to the Popper Bluff Municipal Airport. Mr. Massingham?
Yeah, some of you all recall, we passed an ordinance back in April of 2013 to enter into a contract with Eastern Aviation for fuels for the Popper Bluff Municipal Airport. That was for a five-year period with one five-year extension. Airport manager Gary Pride suggested that we go out for bid again this year because when we bid that back in 2013, I think there was actually only two bidders, maybe one. Thought we might have a better outcome, which I think we have. There's not a whole lot of difference on fuel prices, just a few pennies a gallon between the bids, but Eastern Aviation has agreed to several different, different things which will end up saving the city money. There's three fuel hoses on our tanks that need replaced at a price of about $2,000 apiece. Eastern Aviation has agreed to pay for those hoses, and we will have them installed. Also, the tanker truck that we use for jet fuel, which has to take, take the fuel out to the jets, we've been paying $900 a month for three years, or five years, and I really thought that was a lease purchase item, and it wasn't, so what they are wanting us to do, and I thought it was a good idea, is enter into a three-year lease payment agreement with Eastern Aviation for this fuel truck. The payment, I think, is $641 a month, and at the end of three years, it will become ours. Next year, we may look at lease purchasing a fuel truck for the avgas for the regular airplanes. Gary feels like this is our best bid, and I tend to agree with him, so that's what we're recommending. We had it on the voting session for tonight, but we really need to table the voting part of it until Wednesday night.
Are there any questions? With that, I would entertain a motion, and second, to move item B to the voting session to be held on Wednesday, April 18th.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Our next item, BB, and the action-held item, we, there's no need for a closed session tonight, so we'll move right on into the city manager's report.
I just want to remind everybody, Buff Up the Bluffs, the 28th. As you know, we have curbside pickup for the elderly. We usually have about eight to 10 vehicles that go around and pick that up, and whatever's left on Monday, the street department has to do. We're actually needing volunteers to drive pickup trucks. I don't expect anybody with a brand-new pickup to go out there and throw scrap metal in their pickup, but if you know of anybody, or any of you all have a older pickup and you'd like to help, we'll need a driver and one person to help. City planner Matt, my mind just went blank. Matt Winters and myself are actually going to be driving a street department pickup truck and picking up that day, and whoever else volunteers, but we'd appreciate any help we can get.
And again, the date is?
April 28th.
April 28th. Okay.
That's all I have.
Is there anything else to come before the council? Again, I want to thank you for electing me as your new mayor. I look forward to a new year working with our council and watching our city grow. Any motion to adjourn? Oh, something else?
April the 20th, on Friday, did you mean?
28.
April 28th. Sorry.
Sorry. Thanks.
All right, is there anything else to come before the council? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We adjourn. Hey, I'm listening, I have everything up here, I had to wing all that.